Fabulous, thank you. Welcome to the December 14th Select Board Meeting of the Town of Barrington. As the Chairperson of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Microsoft Teams platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. Phone participation can take place by dialing 1-603-664-0240 and entering conference ID 676-749-973. #. Video participation can take place by typing in bit.ly/Barrsb and audio and video recording will be taking place during this meeting. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams phone or videos. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Town of Barrington at www.barrington.nuhamshire.gov. The public can alert the public body during the meeting if there is a problem with access. This can be done by calling 664-0146 or emailing administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov. Should the public not be able to participate, we would be adjourning the meeting and rescheduling it for another time. Please note that all votes taken during the meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting, beginning with Select Person Air with a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under right to know.
Dan Laia, 334 Old Conker, Terrific. I am in my office by myself, doors locked. There is no one influence my vote.
George Bailey, in my office. There's nobody in the office with me. And I have nobody here to influence my vote, and I am in my office. I hadn't already said it. Thank you.
Andrew Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. I am in the office with the door closed. My wife, my son, and our dog are in the house.
Jim Sakosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I'm alone with my dogs. That's it.
Tracy Hardikoff, 48 Stone Farm Road. I'm home with my husband and will be joined, I think later on, by my grown son and I as well have the pup in the house. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I apologize. It was a flag and then it turned into Christmas music. I don't know how. I'm sorry.
There we go. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hang on. Got to grab the meeting agenda.
Why it's not very loud? Did you turn the volume up on my phone?
Who's not very loud?
I don't know. That was background noise from somebody participating on their phone. I just muted. I think it was a conversation.
Holy cow. Okay. Public hearings. I'm going to have to ask for your help, Connor, on this. Am I just to read the public hearing notice?
So the only thing that's required is to open the public hearing, ask for board comment, public comment, and then close the public hearing. I would recommend for the second public hearing that you recuse yourself and have Andy conduct the second public hearing.
I think that's wise. So, under the first public hearing, we're talking about map 22 lot 1, a single wide manufactured home built in 2000. It was deeded for non-payment of taxes in 2020. The owner of Pumpkin Hollow is interested and willing to purchase the unit for the full amount owed, which is $12,265.04 at the current time, and leave the tenant in place. This meeting would allow the Select Board to sell the building as justice may require. Prior to holding public hearings, the proposal must be submitted to the Conservation and Planning Board, and that has occurred, correct, T.A. MacGyver?
Yes, and you have their recommendation in your packet as well.
Very good. So, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns by the Select Board?
I have a comment. Just, there was a lot of discussion with the Planning Board around this property because knowing the sale price of mobile homes, they thought that the owner of the park was getting a heck of a deal. And that they, if you look at the commentary from the Planning Board, was that they felt it should sell closer to market value as opposed to just back tax value.
Okay. Go ahead, Select Person Air.
The town's not in the business to make money, and that is kind of a unique situation because there's back rent on lots, rents and stuff, so it was the best interest of the town, I feel. I'm thinking of myself only.
And I'll make a comment that it's my understanding that the state of New Hampshire has changed how tax deeding occurs and that the town would not be able to retain more than the back owed taxes on this potentially. Is that correct, T.A. MacGyver?
Yes, so the town, regardless of what it sold for, would not be able to retain any more than the full amount owed.
Very good. Okay. And public hearing, do we have any public comment at this time? Public comment, if you'd like to mouse over your screen in the upper right-hand corner. There's a hand. You click on it. It alerts us that you'd like to speak. Or you can call 664-0146, or you can email administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov to alert us that you would like to speak. Everyone speaking has a limit of three minutes. We have anyone who'd wish to speak, Connor?
I see no activity.
Okay. So at this time, I will close the public hearing on map 22 lot 1, single wide manufactured home built in 2000, and I will recuse myself for the public hearing that's coming up and ask Vice Chair Knapp to take over.
And Andy, before you do, I'll just fill the Board and community in. I know that the Board is aware. So throughout the land sale process this year in 2020, the Lands Committee went through a tremendous amount of work identifying properties for sale, properties to sell directly to abutters, properties to take to auction, et cetera. So among those properties was this one that the Board's going to consider, which the Board has already recommended for sale. It's map 262 lot 14, sub lot 9. This is not a tax-deeded property, and because of that, the traditional disposal of tax-deeded property isn't sufficient. The Board, the town also has to go through the RSA 4114A process. And so this property was included in the land sale auction on December 12th, where a buyer was identified through the competitive process at auction, and multiple bidders were interested. So during that competitive process, Chair Hardikoff was the successful high bidder. So she'll recuse herself for the process, but the Board is essentially reaffirming their decision to sell the property, but through the statutory process of RSA 4114A. So that's going to be a hearing tonight, a hearing on December 28th, and then a final decision on January 4th. So there's the update for the Board and community. And Andy, if you'd like to open the public hearing?
Yep. So I'll open the public hearing for the sale of map 262-14-9 pursuant to 4114A. The property in care, as Connor has already mentioned, is not a tax-deeded property, but a sale of a town-owned piece of land. Does the Select Board have any comments that they'd like to speak? Hearing, none?
Dan has his hand up?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I attended the auction, and then the town did very good on this lot. We made good money on it. I was very pleased.
Well, we can't make more money than what's owed.
There's nothing owed on this one, Jim. This is town-owned land that's being sold, not tax-deeded property.
And it brought more money than I expected personally.
Bailey, no comment.
All right. Anything else from the Board? Hearing, nothing. I'll open the public hearing to the public. Anything coming through on your end, Connor?
I don't see anything. We'll give it just another second. I know sometimes to unmute your phone takes a second, but I'm seeing no activity. I think we're good.
I'll give it 15 more seconds. That way it's got a full 30-plus seconds.
Great. And this lot was also recommended for sale by the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board at their previous meetings.
Correct. All right. Seeing no one requesting comment to speak and no further action, I will close the public hearing on the sale of map 262-14-9. And I will turn the meeting back over to Tracy.
You're still muted, Tracy.
Thank you, sir. Up next for appointments is the 2021 budget and warrant article finalization. I will, so the Select Board's being asked to finalize the budget and all warrant articles for presentation at the budget hearing scheduled for January 4th. Connor, do you want to speak to any of this?
Yeah, so first I'd like to ask that you give the Advisory Budget Committee an opportunity to weigh in one final time. They met last week and just have a couple of items they'd like to reiterate. I believe the Chair, Mr. Saunders, is online.
Excellent. Steve, you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, Steve.
All right, there was, I believe, one more article that we did not address at the last meeting.
Yep, so I'll take that if you want, Steve. So at the at the previous Advisory Budget Committee meeting, the Budget Committee recommended that the Emergencies Capital Reserve contribution increase from 50,000 to 60,000, the purpose being much of the equipment or a good chunk of the equipment that the Police Department would like to establish the Capital Reserve for is actually communications equipment, and they felt like that would be better budgeted in the Emergency Communications Capital Reserve than the Police Equipment Capital Reserve. They felt like increasing that 10,000 would be appropriate and keeping the Police Equipment Capital Reserve at 25,000. So that was included in what the Board ratified as far as supporting the Budget Committee's recommendations, but it wasn't talked about specifically. So we wanted to make sure the Board was aware of that recommendation and agreed with that increase from 50 to 60,000. That's how it's reflected in your materials tonight.
All right, and the other item?
One second. Sorry, Steve. I think Dan has a comment. Tracy was muted.
Select Person Air.
To clarify this, is this in the police budget or is the fire one too for communications?
So the Emergency Communications Capital Reserve was actually established to be able to support the communication needs of the Police Department, Fire Department, and Highway Department. It's that we have been specifically saving over the last number of years for the improvements that we know we'll need to make on the fireside, but it has been used and is available for use in the Highway and Police Departments as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. And the rationale that the Committee used in that regard really had to do with the fact that the communication requirements are going to be significant for the Police Department too as technology changes, and this helps build up a reserve so that they can use that instead of hitting us all at once in a later date. The other warrant article that the Board, the Committee would like to opine on really is the Library warrant article. We agree totally with the reduced amount that the Board approved, but we still believe that since we're dipping into lowering our target ratio for the reserve fund balance, that we should not take that out of our own fund balance, but rather make it a tax item. And we'd like the Board to reconsider that if you would, and that was the only other item we had as an issue.
Madam Chair, was that Article 13?
Tracy, you're still muted.
That's Article 7, Madam Chair.
I'm not sure. Steve?
The Library Article 7, yes.
Thank you.
And Chair Hardikoff, I believe Dan and Man Shrek, member of the Budget Committee, has also raised his hand, if you're right.
That makes sense to me now. I have two Dan guests in here, and I couldn't figure out how there was still a hand raised. Dan, if you're on here, please go right ahead. Take the floor.
I think I'm talking now. Am I okay?
Yep.
One of the reasons we thought the communications was so important is probably when the police need to change their communications, they need to change all of their equipment. They can't do it piecemeal. So it'll be a big chunk in a big pile. Because if they change piecemeal, then they may not be compatible. And therefore, we thought that that fund needed to be fairly significant in the out years. Thank you.
Great. Tracy, you're muted again.
I'm trying to keep you all from hearing my rather large 100-pound dog eating dog food in the background.
So you can mute yourself again. I'll just go over the documents the Board has and then start conversation from the Board. So
Thank you, Connor.
Yeah, what the Board has in your packets tonight and for community members, what's linked to my report, which is available on the Town's website in a few different places, but in the calendar as an agenda item. The first document is the draft budget. So this is the state form that we'll use to submit the budget. This is what will be available at deliberative session and at the budget hearing. It's obviously organized a little bit different than our line item by line item operating budget, but this keeps the same form and factor year over year for transparency to the community and also to the state. So that's the document there. The bottom-line number is the same as the Board reviewed at the meeting last week. The next document, Dan, go ahead if you have a question on that document.
Well, no, just in general, I made some comments last week with different departments and stuff to clarify. And now these added 10 grand. Could we, I probably won't have tonight, but give me some clarification on everything because that budget might change, right? We add
So the 10,000, Dan, is just increasing the Capital Reserve contribution, which is coming from fund balance? So that doesn't impact the operating budget at all. It's the same operating budget that you viewed last week. So the next document you have is the default budget. So again, as I presented last year, this is a document that I encourage the Board to review. These are, you know, there's no operating manual for developing a default budget. There's a lot of subjectivity from community to community. The goal is to identify and remove any one-time payments or payments that aren't in the upcoming budget while including anything that you're contractually obligated to include. And so I think it's really important to get this right to, you know, support the intent of a Senate Bill 2 community with the default budget being decided at the ballot session. So what you'll see is that I'm estimating that the default budget is $130,000 less than our current operating budget, which is about $100,000 less than the operating budget that we are requesting. So this document isn't final. Certainly, we can make changes up until deliberative session, but it's an important document, and I want to maintain the transparency by making it available to the Board and community as soon as possible. Next document you have in your packet is a petition warrant article. This is the only petitioned article we've received to date. If anybody in the community is interested or thinking about submitting a petition warrant article, please, the sooner the better. If we're able to receive that article in time for the January 4th budget hearing, we will not have to hold a special hearing for review of a petition warrant article, although of course we will if we need to. So this is a petition warrant article with the goal of increasing the all-veterans optional tax credit from $450 to $750. The language in the article talks about increasing it over a three-year period. So it is very unlikely that the law allows the increase to be phased in over three years. We're double-checking with the Department of Revenue Administration. The language actually comes from the establishment of the all-veterans credit. So when the all-veterans credit was created, the legislature knew that it would be a big task for communities to take that huge liability on in one year. And so they actually, in the statute, allowed the establishment of the all-veterans credit to be phased in over three years. So the premise comes from that, but the reason this is different is because you're increasing the credit, not establishing it. So like I said, we are double-checking, but we might need to clean up that discrepancy at deliberative session just to make the article legal. I will also say that this petitioned article has not been checked by the supervisors yet. It's on their desk. Certainly, they have plenty of signatures as long as they all check out. I only noticed one duplicate, which tends to happen from time to time. But this is, we intend for this to be supported and end up on the warrant, but like I said, we might have a legal amendment at deliberative session. I saw a couple of hands go up on that. I saw George's first.
My question was answered. Thank you.
Dan?
My question was, had it been checked?
Okay.
So, petition warrant articles, do we take a stand on them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, the Select Board will have a recommendation. I intend for the Select Board to make those recommendation votes after the budget hearing on January 4th, ahead of deliberative session. So that's the petition warrant article. Next, we have the draft warrant. So again, this is the state form, so, you know, to see it in the same fit and finish that you see it every year. These are the articles as they exist right now, including that petition warrant article at the end. You'll notice that we'll still need to fill in the recommendations from the Select Board and Budget Committee, and certainly if any other changes were made, you know, those changes will be made as well. The Police Collective Bargaining Agreement, there's still information to be filled in there. We'll be discussing that later in the meeting tonight. And finally, on that petition warrant article, you'll notice that I've performed the tax impact calculation. This is assuming that it goes from 450 to 750, which again, the language in the article is 100 a year, but this would be the maximum liability if it were just 750. And that would be a 12.5 cent impact on the tax rate or $37.50 on a $300,000 property. So you also have this information in a different format, a more direct with larger text, which is the warrant articles requested during the 2021 budget process. Again, it's the same information, the language that I intend to use for each warrant article. I've highlighted in yellow the decisions that have yet to be made or affirmed by the Board. So that is all of the information. I know the Board went through the budget at the last meeting and reaffirmed their previous decisions in support of the Budget Committee, but what I'd be looking for from you tonight is an affirmation of the documents as they've been presented to be finalized and published for the budget hearing on January 4th.
Questions, comments, concerns, Select Board members? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
I have a question for Mr. MacGyver. So when the time comes, this is all going to be redone and so we can turn around and have another copy of it so I don't have to keep this. Thank you. That's all I need to know. Yep.
Yes, so after, certainly if there are any changes made to the warrant articles, you'll have updated materials for that. But then again, after the January 4th budget hearing, when the Select Board takes the recommendation votes, the documents will be updated then. And then I believe, scheduled for January 5th, the Budget Committee will be taking their recommendation votes at deliberative session. And again, I'll remind the Board and the community, the deadline for a petition warrant article is January 12th. So if a warrant article comes in requesting an appropriation, any appropriation, after January 4th, then we'll have to hold another second hearing, second budget hearing on January 18th. And the last date we'll know whether or not we have to hold that hearing is, at the end of the day, January 12th. For example, the increasing the veterans credit warrant article, that would not require a hearing because it's not an appropriation. It's a significant article, and then certainly will have an impact on taxes, but non-appropriation articles do not require hearing the same way that the budget and appropriation warrant articles do.
Very good. Thank you, Connor, for a very detailed description of the budget and warrant articles. At this time, we have what looks like our first public comment. Go ahead.
Sorry, Tracy. I just didn't know if the Board wanted to take a vote on the information as presented to be finalized for the budget hearing, or if consensus is satisfactory enough that the Board's satisfied with the information as presented.
So you'd like us to?
Vote.
Okay, so I would make a motion to accept?
I am voting on this at this point.
So that I can finalize all the documents to get published as decided by the Select Board. It's the Select Board's budget and warrant to present to the community. This is what we've been working on, but in order to publish it out to the community, this is the Select documents.
Right. Isn't consensus sufficient with this?
Yeah, I'm not willing to put a vote. Do I have all information?
So do I have your consensus that the budget as it's been presented should be presented at the January 4th budget hearing?
What changes?
Who said something about changes?
Me. If the same changes will be updated.
Which recommended changes do you have?
We're not done through all this yet, all these warrant articles and everything else. So, but right now it looks good, but if any numbers change, like we added 10 grand, that kind of changes things, doesn't it?
But we've changed that within the budget at this time. Select Person Bailey?
My question piggybacks on what Dan was just brought up. When is the last possible day that we have to make changes to the budget? In other words, if we, right now, we're saying, all right, we're satisfied so far, but if changes come in and Connor makes a change to any of the warrant articles or to a line item, what's the last possible time that we would have to meet and to approve or disapprove of that change?
So that question, you have to hold a hearing on any changes. So you have to notice a hearing seven days before the hearing, and with that notice, you have to notice what you're having the hearing on. So that would essentially put your deadline for any changes seven days before the last day to hold a hearing, which is January 18th. So the last day to make changes is January 11th. Well, I'd be clear, though, my intention in the Select Board approving the information as presented, I'm not making any more changes. Only the Select Board would make changes. But, you know, my goal would be that this is what we're taking to the budget hearing. The only items that are contemplated later on the agenda are ratifying the collective bargaining agreement, and there's an additional warrant article request that the Board discussed at the last meeting regarding the UTV. Those are the only changes yet to be discussed, which I would hope to be finalized by the end of tonight's meeting. But everything else, the budget and warrant articles, my intention, and as we've set the schedule at the beginning of the process, is that this is the conclusion of making those changes.
I want to apologize both to the Chair and to Connor. It was a backdoor way of finding out so the Board would know what the last possible day is that we could turn around and make a change before you would have to is that we could turn around and make a change before you would have to change the hearing date. And thank you, Madam Chair, for doing it, and I apologize for being that way to get it out. Thank you.
Sure, Vice Chair Knapp?
Yep, I was going to say, my suggestion would be that we put off, if Connor is insisting on a vote on the budget, I would suggest we wait until after we've talked about anything that may have any impact on the budget, even minutely toward the end of the meeting.
Okay, so is the rest of the board in consensus on that, that will move the approval of it? So I'm going to move that.
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead, Select Person Air.
Madam Chair, you were not in part of the meeting last week. I brought up a couple of questions, about budget items as it went down through there. I don't know if we can readdress them, like there was on the uniforms for the highway, the library, the Madden fees, I guess you can't talk about that, and then there's a non-public item coming up later on this meeting. Are they going to be addressed?
So, uniforms for the highway, library fees, and what else?
A non-public item that is going to be addressed later on.
A non-public, okay. So?
Dan, the conclusion of the, the conclusion of the highway uniforms is that the Select Board voted to, or reaffirmed their support, making it clear that the uniforms be provided as a reimbursement, not as a stipend. And my understanding is that was the resolution of that item by the board at the last meeting. So that item's resolved.
And libraries are solved.
The libraries resolved as well, and then the prosecution contract, we don't intend to make any budget changes regardless of the board's decision on the prosecution contract. We don't intend to make any changes to the operating budget as presented.
Thank you for clarification.
You're welcome.
So I have moved the board vote on the budget and warrant article finalization to after all new business. Does that sound appropriate, Board members?
Bailey, aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Jim?
Secoche, aye.
Okay, great, and Hardikoff, aye, that sounds like a good approach.
Thank you, good idea.
Up next is the public comment. Public comment is a total of 15 minutes, three minutes per person. If you would like to speak during public comment, please mouse over your screen, select the little hand in the upper right-hand corner, or dial 664-0146, or email administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov, or unmute yourself, unmute yourself by pressing star six. Have I got that right?
You're just perfect.
Good, fabulous, I'll give that 30 seconds.
I heard, "May I speak?", it maybe sounded like Peter Royce?
Yes, it is.
Ah, go ahead, sir.
I have a question and a comment. The question is, how is it that the request for the veterans exemption is not a budget item, or, I don't understand how you're putting that in that category, because it does involve money. I think Connor said it wasn't an appropriation, but it would be, wouldn't it?
Well, it's nonappropriation, it's per Department of Revenue Administration, it's considered a non-monetary warrant article. And I think, I'm glad that it's presented in a, I'm glad that it was received in time, that the information will be available for the budget public hearing, but the hearing is only required for appropriation articles. So either appropriations from fund balance or appropriations from the tax rate. Certainly, I understand your point, and I think, like I said, in this case, we're glad to have the information and get it out to the public as soon as possible. Reminder to anybody considering petition articles, the sooner the better. But yeah, no, I can, I can share with you the details of the statutory requirements for the budget hearing and where they draw the line, but I, point well taken.
Okay, well, I'm still not sure I understand, but that's okay. I can talk to you about that later. The other comment I wanted to make was, I would really encourage the Select Board to make some kind of position on where the Budget Committee has decided, and I think it's pretty obvious, there's a significant difference between what the fire chief is telling us he's going to need for equipment and what we're raising for, what we're raising for capital reserve. So is the Select Board saying they don't care if we come up with a $600,000 deficit in 12 years? Or, I'm not really sure I understand where the Select Board's coming from, just saying, yeah, we see what the fire chief's saying, but we're not going to do anything about it. And again, I'm not trying to be in any way argumentative, but I totally don't understand that position.
I have one comment that I would like to make to that, and that is simply, it occurred to me as I was reviewing all of the material, that one of the things in looking at that schedule that we're not able to project is any increase in the actual revenue to the town of Barrington 12 years from now. Have we built more homes, are we bringing in more taxes and what have you? And it occurred to me that planning that far out, when we are not in alignment with, I mean, we're projecting an expense for 12 years, but we're not necessarily projecting a revenue for the same 12-year period of time, is what occurred to me. Dan, you have your hand up, go ahead.
To clarify, I thought that 80 grand would help bring us within, within range eventually, it wouldn't hurt us. We moved it up to 80 grand last week?
So the alternative schedule that the Budget Committee provided showed if the board started at 80,000 in 2021, and increased 10,000 every year up until 2032, then there would be sufficient funds. The, I don't want to say the problem, but a drawback of that approach is that we're talking about quickly getting over $100,000 appropriation request, and by 2032, I think it was up to 190,000. So I think the Budget Committee was concerned that if we start presenting voters with warrant articles that large, they may not be as interested in supporting them, which if you skip one year at $150,000, say, now you have $150,000 deficit. So I think the Budget Committee was looking at an alternative funding source that would be more reliable and be easier to set aside the money that we know that we would need.
So in response to that, did anyone want to recommend changes to that? Or are you comfortable with what you have currently decided?
Well, Madam Chair, I'm perfectly satisfied with where we're at, because we did address the addition, excuse me, the issue, and I think, working at it, as people have commented to me about being piecemeal, but it's something we're working on, because we have to remember that shortly or somewhere down the road, we're going to exceed a population of 10,000, and you never know how the people are, you might end up having a different form of government. So I think right now, the way we're doing it, at least we're working on it, and it's not something that can be done right away, because we have no idea what's going to transform politically in the next four to eight hours, I mean, hours, years compared.
I agree with that, too.
Yeah, I'll tell you, it's something that's very scary, so I really wouldn't want to put the taxpayers on the hook for going up with it. It's a wonderful idea, but I think we need to give it another year before we do something like that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Can I respond to that?
Well, remember, so the only thing I'm mindful of at this point is that public comment is not supposed to be back and forth, Peter, and if I allow one person to do that, so I think we need to allow some leeway, because you're the Advisory Budget Committee member, but I don't think if we allow public comment back and forth, we would then have to allow it for all other participants, but you're welcome to make public comment as an ABC representative.
So is that a yes or a no?
That's a yes. I said you're welcome to make public comment as an ABC representative.
If, what the ABC members were trying to establish was some plan that looked like it resolved what the funding issue was. And to add to what the Chairperson said, yes, revenues might be up, but costs might be up. And I just think we're gambling on waiting until we've got our feet in the fire to try to raise the money to accomplish what the fire chief is looking towards. And, you know, that's okay, and if what Select Person Bailey said, we're waiting a year, that's probably okay, too, to revisit this issue, but I just don't want to see the board ignore it. And that's my biggest concern, is just kicking the can down the road and saying, well, let somebody else worry about it. And that's my biggest concern.
Sure. Do we have any other public comment? I see Dan with his hand raised, I'm not sure if that's our prior speaker?
That was Dan Manchreck. I don't know if that was a carryover. Mr. Manchreck, do you have an additional comment you'd like to offer? He's not unmuting himself.
No, actually, I don't. I thought I took my hand down, but maybe not.
Here, I can do it for you here.
Okay, very good. Any other emails or call-ins?
I see nothing.
Okay.
One second, somebody just lit up. If we give a second, maybe they can speak.
Right, this is Karen Town.
Oh, hi, Karen.
I have a question about ABC's decision on reducing the capital reserve on the library. This is the first time the library has ever asked for a capital reserve fund. I read the Envision program that was held in 2014, and it was very apparent that the town felt they needed a larger library, a more improved library. And this is, we were actually at a trustees meeting, we're advised by Selectman George Bailey to go for this $75,000. And to see that we are now being reduced and making it a taxable event down the road when other departments aren't being asked to present taxable events. I just want to understand the rationale.
Chair Hardikoff, if I could just make it clear, so the board understands, and the community, as it stands right now, the article that the Select Board has supported is a $25,000 article, but is funded from fund balance. It was certainly the recommendation from the Budget Committee that it be funded on the tax rate, but the Select Board at the last meeting continued to be of the opinion that it should be funded from fund balance. Thank you, sorry, go ahead, Chair Hardikoff.
I was just going to indicate that public comment, while very important, is not a question-and-answer session, and so I absolutely respect Karen Town's perspective, but this time, we're not, because we have to function as a collective group, we are one of five, and the voice that is given to decisions has to be as a collaborative group, we're not really able during public comment to engage in a question-and-answer session. But I respect what you have shared in reference to building our infrastructure and our library. Select Person Bailey, did you want to speak during public comment?
Well, the only comment I have is a back-and-forth comment, and I know how you feel about it, Chair, and that's what, the only thing that I can say on this article is that I really, if it goes back and forth, my recommendation was, at that meeting, when they decided to, the library trustees decided to raise it, I was asked how I felt, and I said, it's best that you submit it and put it in, because I cannot tell them what to do and not to do, even as a private citizen, and that's where issue was. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more three-minute segment. Hang on, Select Person Air, I'm just going to see, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak before Select Person Air takes the last grouping?
I see nothing coming through my end.
Go ahead, Dan, three minutes.
Dan Air, I respect the Chair's position, we need to have a point of order. We can't be going into debates like this, so we need to mend our ways. Thank you.
Thank you for the point of order. Any other public comments? I have two minutes. Connor, you see anything coming through?
Nothing.
I will close public comment at this time and move on to the review of the meeting minutes from 11:30 2020 meeting, which was the longest meeting of our lives. No, I'm just kidding, it was a very long meeting. If anyone wonders whether the Select Board does a lot of work, go ahead, read the meeting minutes. It was a very long meeting. Do I have any changes, questions, comments to the meeting minutes? And if there are none, do I have a motion?
Air.
You'd like to accept the meeting minutes as displayed for November 30th, Select Person Air?
Yes.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Air?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Secoche, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye, the motion carries on the acceptance of the meeting minutes. Thank you. Up next is our staff report. TA MacGyver, take it away.
Only one thing that's not on the agenda. I had provided an update to the board, but I wanted to make sure to provide an update to the community in this venue. We had an extremely successful land sale auction on this past Saturday, so this is the first time in recent history that the town has put up properties for sale in a venue like this. The auctioneer did a tremendous job deriving what I believe is the most value for the properties back to the town. So the town successfully sold five properties, and we will be collecting in excess of $169,000 in amounts owed to the town. And more importantly, those five properties will be going back onto the tax rolls and will be, in some cases, having improvements based on the requirements of the Select Board. So it was tremendously successful, thank you for everybody who came and expressed interest in the town property. And I think from, in my position, when we look to sell properties in the future, I will absolutely be recommending going that model in order, again, to make sure we derive the most possible value from, for the town.
Okay, you have a comment, Select Person Air?
Yes, I second the town industry report as a selectman and as a citizen. I was a registered bidder, too. Thank you.
Very good. Up next is Municipal Office Administrator Cuddles' report.
You'll get it one of these days. For your review and signature, we have Payroll Manifest 2020-97A, one agreement for assessing services for 2021, and there is one electronic packet that's still in need of review and signature by one Select Board member. I will resend it after this meeting if somebody could take a peek at it and sign off at your convenience, I would appreciate it.
Very good. Moving on to old business, you have before you the outline that was requested by the Select Board of the UTV vehicle, and you are being asked to consider allowing, I think it's a 50-50 split of the cost, absorbed partially by the Fire Department Association, and the rest of it through the budget process. As a, is it a warrant article? Yes. As a warrant article, would the Select Board consider placing the UTV purchase warrant article on the 2021 warrant? Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Jim Secoche.
So I know a lot of people in the power sports industry, and I think 40,000, and you know, I've talked with Connor about this, yeah, you know, does he have to shoot high just in order to make sure that he can get everything that he wants? But I talked to this guy, and I go, hey, I go, have you ever sold a side-by-side to a municipality for $40,000? And he goes, well, he goes, that would have to have every option with two gold plows. I'm all in favor for getting a vehicle, but do I think it's $40,000 worth? We're in a COVID year, I think there was... I think there was between eight and six calls between uh the PD and the FD on when they had to go get somebody. But I mean, even if you look at Northwoods Law, when somebody's up hiking on a mountain, they have people that they call. They walk in, they walk out. Um, so I I just wanted to say that piece and, you know, if it helps you make a decision one way or another, great.
Okay, um, I don't know who raised their hand because I was reading, Select Person Air or Select Person Napp? Who was Napp?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Select Person Air.
This is directed to the whole board, has face value. This is mostly used on conservation land. The conservation is down to two thousand dollars, and then they have no means to support any of this. And it is directed towards them, but they have took their um, we've done real good work, we addressed all the concerns, and all the money that's gonna be coming in the future is going to the dam repair on Goodwill Richardson. And this is the million-dollar question, a hundred and ninety thousand dollar question that's coming up later on. Hopefully, we get that full hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Cutback with the states, we don't know yet, but we are addressing the concerns of the um dam, and we don't, we don't have any money.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Napp?
Yep. Um, so my commentary on it is um I, when I, when I look at the areas where this vehicle would go, until there's actually some kind of reasonable trail network in place to get to and from, and we have had some, we've actually planned for this so that it's not coming in at the eleventh hour, um that it could be thoroughly vetted. At that point, I would consider supporting it, but in its current state, um I do not support it this year. Um, or I do not support putting it forward um as a Select Board-supported article um in in its state and in the the current state of with the economy and the budget.
Okay, Select Person Bailey?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, to everybody here, first of all, on one of the comments, uh I can see that uh the chief has talked to the chair uh of the Conservation Commission, and he has agreed uh that it's a worthwhile project and has agreed to put it on the agenda for the further meeting. So no money was dissolved uh right there, but there wasn't asked for contribution on that. And if you look over on the back, the Firemen's Association has agreed to pay uh up 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 to fifty percent for it to go that way. And I also had a conversation in the past with the uh chief, and I I really must say that uh, you know, I talked about the trailer and the use of it and what have you, and although I support this, I I support this article, but I also support going before the voters because the voters need to know that even though it's a worthwhile unit, and it's a needed unit according to the chief, and it used to be with the Fire Department, and I know whether or not the Conservation Commission donates or doesn't donate, then I'm sure that uh the department has worked that out, so that will be taken care of on that. But I feel that uh it's just, it's just such a latecomer to ask the board to turn around and and spend more money after we have asked so many departments uh to to cut back to make this uh COVID year at least a little bit better in Barrington by the work we've all accomplished on the uh budget that we're going to present. So I I really say, you know, not this year, but next year, you know, and I know, you know, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, Peter, but I just think that asking the taxpayers right now is just just too much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Um, Select Person Sakosha, is your hand back up?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
And I'm in support of this, too. Don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not coming being like, no, we never need one. Uh, it's definitely, it's, it should be in the works, which it is. Um, but I think the Conservation Committee and um I think the Southeast Land Trust, I think they should get together, and they should actually, you know, to echo a little bit of what Andy said, to have a trail system is, you know, there should be more snowmobile trails out there because you get a club that maintains the trails for free, they're gonna be wide enough that you can go down and people can walk down them in the summer. Um, but I just wanted to mention that I am for this, but forty's a little steep for me, and you know, we've went to, you know, the library, the the rec um and said, hey, it's it's COVID times, and you know, we're gonna tighten up this year, so it should be in the works, which I'm glad it is, but not this year.
So I I would like to point one maybe obvious thing out from my opinion. I see strong support for this by three of you. And I as well, as a fourth member of the Select Board, have strong support for this. I understand that as we approached our budget, because we were anticipating a a huge drop in revenue, that we wanted to approach the budget in a way that was was definitely zero-based budgeting. In this particular case, I can't think of a time where something like this could have potentially been needed more than it is. I think of the fact that during COVID, the one thing people could do was get outside, the one thing they could do was walk the trails, and then the other thing that occurs to me is we've been in a major drought. And if potentially having access to get to a campfire faster is going to save the forests that exist, and we know that there's quite a number of acreage in this town that is like that, I do think for sixteen thousand, or in my particular case, about five dollars added to my tax bill, I do think it's wise to approach this in a year where there's fifty-fifty support for it, and we're not seeing a drop in revenue. I actually anticipate next year is going to be far worse for drops in revenue than this year was. That's just one of five persons' opinions. So I personally will make a motion to place the UTV purchase warrant article in front of the voters this year, and you can choose to second it or not second it. Um, questions, comments, concerns? I don't know who put their hand up because I was babbling on and on.
Andy was first.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
So my my commentary on it is, I don't want, based on your comment, I don't want people to think I don't support it because I absolutely do support the idea of.
Yeah.
Getting what they need. Um, uh although I'll tell you, moving through the woods to a fire, there, especially if it's back in a tight area, there is no way you're gonna do it faster with a UTV than you're gonna do it on foot with the water canister. Uh, it's just not realistic, especially if it's back in the woods. Um, the, my general comment on it is, is I will support it, but I think a bit more legwork and footwork to see if you can get, if Rick can drum up some support from Selt to spend some money for it, since we have a lot of Selt land in this town and more coming. Um, that if the Firemen's Association's willing to support it with next year's funds, and we can get Selt to support it, and then the town is on the hook for maintenance moving forward, I would absolutely be in support of that. And if it came before the board next year, would that is the um, would the, would that is the proposal saying, hey, we have this opportunity to buy it with um the Firemen's Association putting up half and uh Selt putting up the other, or a combination of Selt and someone else? I would absolutely support that, and I would be responsible, I would take the position of being responsible for the town maintaining the equipment moving forward from there.
Okay, Select Person Bailey, you were up next.
All right, my other comment was, we have a lovely garage for them to park it in as opposed to some of the vehicles that I've seen parked in there.
Okay, Select Person Bailey?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to uh make a comment on Jim's comment of trails and uh trails. Uh, we do uh have uh with uh Selt uh to put in walking trails, but they also turn around and come before us on some of their uh uh contracts that we have with them or sales agreements, is that uh they don't allow the ATVs, they don't allow the snowmobiles. So that has to be uh, I would suggest, suggest that uh we maybe ask Dan to uh bring it up to the uh Conservation Commission to tell us what pieces of land Selt has that would allow uh snowmobiles and uh ATVs to go there. But secondly, you know, it doesn't make any difference how I look at this, whether I turn around and I support spending the money right now on your second, on your uh motion, Madam Chair, or I turn around and stick to the guns and I say, you know, we need to really go on what uh Mr. Napp said, Mr. Napp talked about moving forward and getting uh support from the other uh uh individuals that have, that own the property and what have you, and uh you know, it's, you're really putting us in a bind by doing that, but either way, I would support it either way, whether I want to or not, but I just think that uh next year is a better option than all this here. But uh Selt has shown in the past that it's not willing to part with its dollars, and uh I'll have more comments on the next contract that's that we're gonna discuss tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Select Person Air?
All right, I need to clarify earlier, my comment was directed to the board members, or the board, Select Persons and women, Madam Chair. You should be proud of the conservation. They are taking responsibility, Goodwill Jam, we're working hard, hard with funds available. And then I'm sure they would want to chip in on this, but they can't. So I want to be clarified, they're gonna take care of the problems in the future. Income is still up in the air. Hopefully, we could all resolve soon. So, thank you.
Select Person Sakosha?
It is very easy to go out and hike when you don't have to work. I will make that comment. Um, but I would, I would really like to hear from the police chief or uh the Fire Chief and get his final say, because, you know, what we have to remember as a Select Board is we're, we're not voting, hey, we're doing this, but you know, we're gonna put it on that ballot when it comes time to vote, and you know, the town can make their decision. And I would be entailed that I would, I would vote, I would pass through tonight if we went to twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if that's possible, but I, Rick, you know, you're in there day to day. I'm an electrician. You do what you do, so sell me on it one more time.
Uh, Fire Chief Walker?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, if you, the paperwork shows that we re actually reduced the cost from forty thousand down to uh thirty thousand, I believe, five hundred dollars, um because we did shock I want to know that this vehicle, there's a need for this vehicle. I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're just, yeah. You sound a little like your underwater chief.
I'm sorry. The um, the um, the vehicle would be used for both fire and police, and the need to uh enforcement on.
I can't hear him, guys.
I can't hear him.
Chief, you're, um, for some reason, your Wi-Fi.
I think he said he was gonna try and call in.
Yeah, try calling in, Rick. Um, and then I think in the meantime, I received a note from the police chief um that he'd be interested in speaking on this if you're willing to hear from him, and I think Chief Walker was uh starting to talk about the uh benefit to the Police Department as well.
Okay. Have we got chief?
I'll text you, Rick.
All right.
Okay, Ken, I'm gonna deviate, Rick, for a minute to Chief Joy and then come back to you. Chief Joy, you on here?
I believe so. Can you hear me, Madam?
We can, yep, go ahead.
So I I believe what Chief Walker was starting to point out is is what I'm gonna get to. We've had a lot of calls for enforcement in some of those back areas, not just the Selt properties per se, but some of our back Class Sixes where we could get an ATV down, areas like the old Green Hill Pit, uh which we used to have no problem accessing, but that road's got sketchy for some of our cruisers now, uh Kelleher Road slash Brooks Road, uh the backside of Glass Lane, Holly Lane, Tampose. All of these areas, we've had calls for enforcement that we can't get to because we have no tools right now. With the Fire Department, we could share this, and again, Rick and I have had some talks about the differences in emergency lights, et cetera, some slide-in boxes that we could make for different equipment packages, all in-house. So that's gonna be extremely beneficial for the Police Department as well, is getting to these areas that people have been calling about that we currently have no enforcement over. Um, in an emergency situation, yeah, there's a lot of trails, we can't get an ATV down right now, but we can get them to the areas of the trail. Um, down some of the back trails into the Selt property and then walk in from there would make a tremendous difference from our response time. So great combined tool, especially with the Firemen's Association this year willing to pay fifty percent and not putting that burden on the taxpayers. I believe now is the time to take advantage of that because they may or may not be willing to make that offer later on. I certainly will not speak for the Firemen's Association, but things may change in a year that they can't do that. So to look at a, I believe Chief Walker just said approximately thirty thousand dollar rig and only having to put fifteen thousand dollars of that on the backs of the taxpayers versus potentially the hole down the road, I would recommend, if I'm not out of line, at least letting the taxpayers have that say. If that's a tool that they want the Fire and Police Department to have, certainly let them have their voice in it. Um, and that's all I have unless there's questions for me.
Thank you, Chief.
And I think Chief Walker's back ready whenever you are, Chair.
Yes, and I will point out that it is not a Fireman's Association, it is a Firefighters' Association. Go ahead, Chief Walker.
Does that come with cookies, too?
Go ahead, Chief Walker, just speaking up for those female firefighters.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I did want to echo what uh George had said, and the other part of it is, is in reality, what we're looking for is for you folks to see the merit of um having the voters decide whether they want to uh spend the money on this. Um, I I I'm happy that the Firemen's Association has stepped up to uh offer to pay for fifty percent of it. Um, we do intend to work with Selt to try to get some money. Um, I think that while the Conservation Commission may not have any money right now, um, they may down the road be in a position to uh support the project. Um, and that's based on a email that I had with the uh current chairperson. I realize he's the one person who needs to vote on it, but again, we're really just looking a few folks to see the merit of putting it on a warrant and letting the voters uh decide whether they want to raise uh sixteen thousand dollars toward this project.
Very good. Uh, Select Person Eric, did you wish to speak again?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I am not arguing the numbers, uh, but the donation is up. What do you, what do you, I was saying, I don't know if someone's making, what the bounds do.
Okay, I I understand what you're saying, only the fifty percent. I think that's what the warrant article speaks to. Go ahead, Vice Chair now.
I, you you might find me more amenable to it if the warrant article specifically was for the amount of the fifty percent, with fifty percent to be raised from um from from the contribution by the Firemen's Association.
Andy, you can't, you can't structure the article that way. Um, it's the same as like the library donations. So it is referenced in the article, and I included the draft there, um saying that we're looking to raise an appropriate thirty-two, um and sixteen to come from donated from the Firefighters' Association. Um, unfortunately, if we're putting something to voters, that's how the warrant would have to be structured.
Does it have to read "up to," or can it be sixteen thousand will be donated? Because it says "up to."
No, it could be sixteen thousand.
Okay. Um, or fifty percent would be donated. Go ahead, Vice Chair. Well, I get to speak, too. I'm a, I'm a board member, too. Go ahead, Vice Chair now.
I know, I just hadn't completed where I was at. Um, if Connor hopped in to comment on it, if uh.
Can we turn around and uh silence somebody who keeps interfering?
Just mute your phone, on your cell phone, Rick, just mute it and then unmute it. Yeah, there you go.
Um, my. My, the other part of my commentary on that is if we were going to utilize it and appropriate it, I would want to make sure the warrant articles says that it is specific about the fact that the money that's being donated has to be donated in order for the funding to, to happen with this warrant article, like we've done with other warrant articles where it only goes into effect should the state contribute their allotted portion.
So you would want it to be written in the format that said to appropriate the sum of $32,000.
I have 30,500 is the.
Okay, 30,500 only to be purchased should 50% of the purchase price be donated? Is that legal for a warrant article?
I'll, I'll have to double check. They really don't generally like to see contingencies that, that happen after the time of town meeting vote. But I think, Andy, what might meet your, the intent of that requirement. The select board will still need to take the action to spend the money. It's over a $10,000 purchase. The purchase won't happen without select board action. So I think if the warrant article passes and the select board and the donation does not come through, I think the select board could easily say, no, we're not pursuing this purchase because it was, and it's still the select board's decision. The only thing voters are doing is appropriating the money for the purpose. It's still the governing body's decision to spend the money.
Right. It's my, my real gripe on this is that ultimately it goes around the horn, it's back before us and it says, well, the people are in support, so go spend the money. So we're the bad guy on the other end if we don't appropriate the money.
Well, I think Rick can speak to the willingness and ability for the Firefighters Association to provide the funds.
I, I absolutely trust that the Firefighters Association will do it. I just, I firmly believe that we've, we've invested a lot in conservation and part of that is that these other organizations need to, need to invest back into the resources that are needed to maintain all of this conservation land. So ideally, I, I just hate the fact that we're saddling the taxpayers with another thing, whether it's a boat, two ambulances. At one point it was a motocross bike. Like we've had a litany of items that these taxpayers end up having to pay for, for years and years and years and maintain. And I'm just, I'm done.
Okay, select person Sakosha.
So, I don't know, can I make the change or can I, can I offer to go, okay, I, I would like to send $25,000 in front of the people. Because in my head, what I'm thinking here, okay, you know, you can get a, you can get a base model for about 15 grand. I mean, it all depends on what brand and who you shop with and where it's bought and you know, there's some variables in there, but I'm thinking if we're getting a Polaris Ranger, you know, those are higher in price compared to some other ones. But I think we start with a decent base model and then we get that and you know, because they're going to have to explore and go, okay, well, yeah, you know, we do need this and we're going to need a trailer for the side by side if we're hauling out bodies out of the woods or, you know, we need to run bucket of water down or, you know, we need a water trailer, stuff like that. I, I think that, you know, going into it full bore, not, uh, not the best interest, but I, I think if we get a base model, you know, the PD can do their part of it. You know, they need to get to a call. They can, you know, I mean, they're plenty fast enough. They can actually be on. You know, stay on any road that they can. That's how they're coming nowadays and I do see it useful, but I would like to see it at 25, not 32.
So, so I want to point out a few things before I move over to select person air. We asked the chief to price out what he felt his department needed to put the warrant article forward. And Jim, you certainly know ATVs better than I do. I think we've only owned four in the course of 20 years and I don't know much about them. But what I can tell you is when we ask a department head to go forward and get pricing on something and they put together a two-page document with the detailed pricing, I feel that we have to respect from an operational perspective that our fire chief does know what level of, whether it's the power of it or the size of it or what have you, that his department would need in order to effectively utilize the equipment. The other thing that occurred to me, we had asked, you know, for impact of the workers' compensation, insurance, maintenance, registration liability. And it all of a sudden occurred to me as a person who's had experience living on the fringe of fire service that workers' comp already covers driving and things like that. So we're not going to find an increase in the workers' comp policy because it's probably already covering all of that. I do have a motion in front of us that we're being asked to consider placing the UTV purchase warrant article on the 2021 warrant. Select person, air, you were next, and then select person Bailey.
No, the numbers given to me, but the budget and stuff are real good. And then that's, them are good numbers that we've gotten. I know, Jim, you want to take a look at it closer? I think they covered everything. It's really, it's basically really good for me. Thank you.
Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, we've had a lot of comments come up here and a lot of things come right down to the same thing. Even if we did a base model and that question was brought up by the chair, you know, are we going to turn around and cut back on the unit that we, that the chief needs or what have you? One of my comments that I made to him when I talked to him the other day was to turn around and how are we going to turn around and get in and out of there? Are we going to have to have a sled type trailer or are we going to be able to have equipment put on it? And, and the results of the conversation to me came to the fact that they were going to look for a way to put a stretcher on there if necessary to do it or other equipment, what to do on it. And I mean, I can understand going with the money and I don't like spending it, but you know, it, it shows up here. He's, he's got it down to 30,000. We got what, 15, 15, 250 coming from the association. And you know, if, if we put a total of 16 on the, that we have to put out, it just makes it a little bit safer place, you know? We've got so many more people moving here and not all of these people here have an elevator that goes to the top. So I think that he should have this equipment to help him up.
Okay, do, I have two more comments coming through. Dan, was your hand up or was Vice Chair? Okay, go ahead.
Fellow board members, that's all good information we got. Them are good numbers. That's a good, good.
Yes, you've stated that. Go ahead, Vice Chair now.
So by the sounds of all this and the fact that we're going to have a water pump on the, to carry a water pump and some forestry tools, we might not have to worry so much about replacing a forestry truck if we're going to go this route.
Okay.
There we go.
At this point, we have a motion before us. Do I have a second on the motion so we can move or not move this? I have a second. Roll call vote beginning with select.
Clarify the motion.
What?
Clarify your motion.
The, the motion was to place the UTV purchase warrant article as expressed in our report on the 2021 warrant. Do you want me to read the warrant article?
It's in your packet, Dan.
I'm on that. Thank you.
So I have a first, I have a second. Roll call vote beginning with select person air.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Knapp, no.
I'm not wanting to keep it from the people. If they want to vote on it, they can vote on it, but yes.
And Hardakoff, I. Okay, motion carries. Thank you all. That was a pretty thoughtful conversation and a good one, I think. Moving on to, hang on, I got to shuffle my paperwork again. Green Hill and Old Settlers Bridge Aid Project Amendments. I got to turn this over to you, Connor. Tell us what we're looking at and what we need to know.
Yep, just real quick, the information's in my packet. So as you know, both of these are ongoing state aid bridge project, projects in town, the Green Hill Bridge and the Old Settlers Bridge. The, it's not uncommon through the years-long process for things to change, whether it be regulations or identified information. So that's what we have here. I'm looking for approval for the third amendment for the Green Hill Bridge and the second amendment for the Old Settlers Bridge. These amendments, as you can see, were recently approved by the Department of Transportation. So the Green Hill Bridge, the, the primary purpose of the amendment is twofold. One, there's new DES requirements that this project will need to meet and will cost more money to meet them as regulations do. And the second one is the got to find somebody to mute here. During an evaluation of the environment of the construction identified a climbing hemp vine, which is an endangered species and will need to be moved. So we need to appropriate money in order to do so. And the Old Settlers Bridge, you'll remember the, the phase one archaeological study identified an old mill site and an old blacksmith site. So the level of findings at those locations have necessitated a, a phase two archaeological study to determine if the construction in that area, if that area can be disturbed during construction. So you have the information in front of you. I'd be looking for separate votes on both of them.
Okay, so questions, comments or concerns? Now, your motion is that the select board's being asked to consider approving the revised Green Hill Bridge Amendment Three. So go ahead, select person air.
To clarify something, I left it in front of me from DOT. It says, Bernton number 41410, Old Canaan Road and Spruce Brook. Is that an old street? Why is it?
That's number two.
Yeah, so Old, Old Canaan Road is now Old Settlers Road and it's over Spruce Brook.
All right, well, Zach, that should be clarified. It's Old Settlers now.
I, I wish I could tell you that I haven't already told them that multiple times. But it's in their folder as Old Canaan and you can only, you can only try so many times, but on your behalf, I'll try again. Do you have anybody that works at the Department of Transportation that might be able to pull some strings? Local engineer? No? Okay.
Okay, so any other questions, comments, concerns? Select person air.
I ain't that stupid. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knapp, if you're going to talk about the hemp vine, I'm moving on. No, go ahead. Floor is yours.
I have no comment on the hemp vine. I, I have a lot of comments in general, but so do they, are they breaking out all the engineering costs? Cause when I look at this, it's, you're looking at two and a half well-paid engineers full-time for a year with benefits in this.
For observation only.
Right.
So amendment number three is $10,000. Amendment number for Green Hill, amendment number two is $6,000.
Right, I'm just, I'm looking at the, like the overall costs and they just keep ticking up and up and up with every one of these amendments and it's I, I mean, we're, it's a, it's turned into Green Hill's a $2 million bridge.
Yeah.
It was proposed as a $2 million bridge.
I know, I know. It's just, I feel like it's absurd.
Okay, so any other questions, comments or concerns? Vice Chair Knapp.
No, I'm clearly just a little bunched up tonight if.
Select person air.
No, it's been ongoing issues and stuff with these firms we hire for observation. It does seem outrageous and stuff when things happen. It seems no accountability, where they're getting paid top dollars for it. Thank you.
Okay, so I would make a motion to consider approving the Green Hill Bridge Amendment Three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Knapp, I.
Sakosha.
Hardakoff, I. Save the hemp vine. Okay, up next before you is I'm sorry, yeah, I'm about to talk about that. Is the Old Settlers Bridge Amendment Number Two and authorizing the town administrator to sign that for the slight increase on the scope and fee? Do you want to, oh, okay, I have a motion. I would make a second on that, but do we have questions, comments or concerns about it?
Same comments as if we had on number three. Someone's chosen us somewhere.
Same butthurt Billy comments from me.
Okay, roll call vote. We have a first and a second. I seconded the motion, beginning with select person air, please.
Present.
Okay.
Bailey, I.
Reluctantly, I.
Sakosha.
Hardakoff, I. The motion carries. Thank you all. Somebody got to tell me what I have to find is it sounds like it's very interesting from an environmental perspective. Okay.
We can have it relocated to Stone Farm.
And you think it's located in Stone Farm?
Oh, we can relocate it there. You don't want it near our bridge.
Oh, okay, I.
I'm going to kick it off.
Yeah, don't do that. It's an endangered species.
Just for the record, that was a facetious comment.
Yes, we know you're joking. Panish Conservation Easement Acquisition. You are being asked to consider approving the acquisition of the Panish Hall Conservation Easement and authorizing the $1,176.50 expenditure from the Conservation Fund as appropriated from the Conservation, oh, sorry, yeah. As appropriated, shouldn't that say approved? Appropriated from the Conservation Commission. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, select person air. I assume your hand was up first.
Yes, we need to get this going. Everything has come together so we can get in front of the executive council. But this person's a money and stuff. So, and then Conservation, how are you guys that money committed for the dam?
Okay, very good. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Would you repeat that figure again? Thank you very much. I have some comments to make on page three. Item I under two and I, I just want to point out that they can also turn around and use this property, cut in the sale of Christmas trees or forest trees of any size capable. I, I want everybody to know that that, that is on that page. I have objections to allowing them to go in and turn around and make all that money. And then after I, I want you to know, this, this takes a lot of time and I'm trying to find the other page that I have highlighted for marks to be talked about on here. And I just, the other part that I had on here was the fact that we have to pay for the trails and everything else on here. There's nothing on here that, and I apologize to the chair so I can read it and show everybody doing. But it just comes up that this makes us the town after we're selling it and allowing it to go into Conservation Easement to be responsible for the trails and you can't even turn around and have snowmobiles. You can't have any other type of vehicle except you got to walk the trail. I mean, if that's, if that's what they want to do or what, what we're going to approve to spend our money on, I wouldn't even give a dollar for that if, if we can't sit there and enjoy the property. And I know I'm only one of, of all of yous, but I'm telling you, we have been hosed by Selt. That's my personal opinion, not the board's opinion on asking us to do everything else there isn't. And I have to tell you, it just, it's, it's not very much benefit. And it also states in there that if there's any trash or what have you, we have to go through and pick up the trash. If they put out a trash can, the, the select board or the Conservation Commission is going to be responsible for getting it done. And if there's trails, if there's people who walk around in there, we either have volunteers to work for it or the Conservation Board of Select is responsible for having the patrol put there. So you can see my vote on this is not too assuring. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the rest of yous for listening.
Okay, go ahead, select person air.
Well, you need to clarify something. This is not Selt's land trust. They are a holder in conservation, in a private homeowner who agreed to do an easement. So George, you're going to watch what you say because there is a private person involved with this.
I will let you know, Mr. Air, if anybody's going to tell me what I have to watch to say or anything else, it will come from the chair. Sorry to do that, Madam Chair.
That's okay. There's, there's definitely some strong perspectives right now. So based on this, what would you like to see listed differently in order to approve it? Let's, let's talk about that and bring it before the Conservation Commission. One of the things that sounds concerning is usage. Am I correct, select person Bailey?
Yes, it does, Madam Chair. When you get under, if I could just go through my note, my notes and I will turn around and go through it. Access, the town has the right to construct and maintain the road, parkway. Uh, access, the town has the right to uh, construct and maintain the road, parkway area. The town to construct and put in that there. That's gonna be our spending again after we turn around and putting our property up front. And as Mr. Uh, Air has pointed out, there's several other participants that are putting the property forward with it.
Mr. Bailey, I guess before you move on, just to address the concern about the access road. Um, so the, there was actually a lot of conversation about that access road in negotiating the Conservation Easement. And the primary purpose of that access um, as being constructed as a road is for use during forestry activities on the Goodwill property, which the town owns. And so uh, it's, it's to the town's benefit to be able to take access as forestry access uh, from Ross Road. Um, so obviously you don't have to cross the dam and whatnot. And so the forestry activities aren't intended on uh, Mr. Panish's property, but they are intended on the Goodwill property. Um, and so we worked with the forester that the select board hired um, and the Conservation paid for to evaluate the best possible access, and this was it. And then the, the trail system, the intention of the Conservation Commission and Trails Committee is to use this as an additional access with a parking area uh, for the Goodwill Trail System. So yes, the, the Conservation Commission and Trails Committee does intend to construct trails, uh, which will take manpower and effort. Uh, but that's to expand the trail network that exists in Goodwill and provide an additional parking area uh, off of Route Nine.
I, I understand that people do not like my stand on doing this and, and thank you Connor for that. I did read that under on page two. And, but I really, I really feel that when I first was on the Conservation Commission back in oh-three, one of the things we looked at was to get 10% by 10. That was one of the things that we had said, that we were trying to get 10% by uh, 2010. And that, that was one of the things that I worked with. Then I found out it was, it didn't go to what I thought I should be involved in. So I don't, I don't do that. But everything in here, even though we're donating $1,100 and uh, dollars and change, then we have it, then it comes up here to, to uh, signage, uh, permit uh, public daytime uh, and equestrian and wheelchair and non-motorized uh, vehicles to be on the road. So you can't have your motorized vehicles and then you can't even have a snowmobile. And in, in past usage, with our business of doing this, we were allowed to have snowmobiles, but not have the uh, ATVs in there. I have, I draw an exception to that. And then over here, when you go to gates and fences, it says the responsibility to install such barriers to Town of Barrington. Here's some more money we have to kick out. Now, Town of Barrington, that includes the Conservation Commission's money and it also includes the purse strings that, that the five of us work on. And then you go to maintenance and it just says the remedies. I, I, I would just like to see this worked out where at least it's a shared cost, not just all of us putting the money back in. I mean, we worked so hard on the budgets. We've worked so hard at all our discussions to save money, to provide safety, what have you. And now we're having this piece of property that we're gonna say to them, well, you can walk on it, but you can't use snowmobiles and it, it, I, I rest on that, Madam Chair. I'm just so frustrated. I sound like an idiot, like, and I'm not, but that's how I feel about this money. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knapp.
Sorry, I'm just losing it at this point. Uh, maybe we can use the potential purchase of this UTV to help uh, with all this trail stuff that uh, we're talking about and allow the Conservation Commission to use it to make the space better from an accessibility end and create um, a more user-friendly environment in that regard.
Anything else? Go ahead, uh, select person air.
My understanding, there's no money coming out of our budget. It's all in the Conservation Budget for the project. So our money's not coming out. It's already figured in, what we need to get reimbursed on. And there is a snowmobile trail. Snow, snowgoers go through Goodwill Park. It connects there as the main trail system. So they have access. We're talking just on the Panish Park and stuff. There is stuff there. And then we're not spending any of our money. It's all budgeted and we, we can get reimbursed on it. So we turn around, spend it on the dam. Thank you.
So I'm gonna speak now as a select person and select person Bailey and Vice Chair Knapp are correct that on page two, beginning on page one under access and carrying over to page two, it says the town can construct the parking lot area of the four spaces and the road. And beginning on page five under maintenance, it is the town's responsibility to maintain the areas used by the public as well as associated infrastructure in a manner consistent with the goals of the Conservation Easement. And then further down, should littering become a problem beyond the means of the landowner to address, it's the responsibility of the town to provide the trash receptacle and collection service and assistance with cleanup in affected areas. And so I, I have to agree with select person Bailey on this, that while this is certainly um, an opportunity for conservation, which I know we all appreciate open lands in the Town of Barrington, that much of the verbiage in here does um, place responsibility for varying levels of maintenance on this property. Go ahead, select person air.
The town is the conservation, but we oversee it. That's how it's a legal thing we're being. So I don't, Connor can speak on that or we can clarify it better. But the town is the conservation.
Could we change the language, Connor, to read the town in utilization of conservation funding?
So I, I think, um, I personally wouldn't recommend that. I think it's splitting hairs. I think it's accepted that the, you know, the Conservation Commission, the reason that they can't acquire property interest without approval of the select board is because it becomes a town responsibility. Um, the Conservation Commission isn't independent of the town. I think the select board has made it clear that through the memorandum of agreement, that the select board's intention is that the Conservation Commission use their funds in the stewardship of their properties. Um, I'm curious if I may, Chair Hardikoff or select person Bailey, if, if you do not believe that those should be requirements of the town, who would be acquiring this Conservation Easement from a private property owner, who do you believe those responsibilities should fall on?
But you see that, I, I agree with what you're asking, Connor. And there is no other way to look at it except for the town to do it. Because under the way the law is, they're appointed and they have to go through us to get authority to spend their money. And I know exactly where you come from. But what I'm saying is, we're, we have given a what, for better reason, we're putting Selt in charge of it. So if we're putting the Southeast Land Trust,
Selt is not involved. Um, I, I was concerned that that's what your misunderstanding was. This is an arrangement between a private property owner, um, Paul Panish and Stephanie Hall, the trust of Paul Panish and Stephanie Hall, and the Town of Barrington. During the expansion of the Goodwill Conservation Area, which the town owns, the Goodwill Conservation Area, and Selt holds the Conservation Easement, this property was offered to the town for free by the Stephanie Hall and Paul Panish Trust, 20 acres, to the town, to be owned by the Stephanie Hall and Paul Panish Trust with an easement to be held by the Town of Barrington. And so as the easement holder, they're, they're offering their land to put their land into Conservation Easement um, at no cost to them. The, the only costs which are cited in my report are for closing and title insurance and things like that. Um, for the town to hold the Conservation Easement on this property. And yes, the, the town would have responsibilities as holding the Conservation Easement and allowing conservation on this property. Um, I, I want to take a moment to remind the board that this portion of the project was part of the conversation from even late last year, when the town closed on the Rubenstein property. The select board has already voted to acquire the Panish Easement. That vote has happened. The only piece of information which wasn't available at the time was exactly what it would cost to close on the property. Um, and we now know that information. And so the, the request for the select board is really to ratify the decision to acquire this easement with the known cost of $1,176.50. Um, and, and so this isn't entirely new information. Um, you know, certainly the details have been finalized. Um, but, but this is what was uh, articulated in previous meetings when the select board agreed to acquire the season.
Thank you.
Are, are we satisfied that the funding for the parking lot and what have you will be directed through the Conservation Commission? And are we satisfied that um, should those funds not be available, that it won't take place until they are available? Is that factual, um, TA McGyver?
Um, what won't take place until they're available?
The building, the, the straight of a roadway and the building of a parking lot.
Um, I, so I think they wouldn't happen without funding, um, because they would require funding to happen. The select board, the Conservation can appropriate money from the Conservation Fund. So if they had money and spent it on the construction of the parking area, they could um, on their own. The select board, if the money wasn't to come from the Conservation Fund, it would have to be a select board decision at the time. To be perfectly honest, I would expect both the access road and the parking lot to be built in conjunction with forestry activities planned on the Goodwill property. Um, so it's a, a great opportunity to open up, you know, start developing a trail system with the forestry activities, have access roads um, that will turn into trails, have the parking area be a landing area for the forestry activities. And then at the end, um, you know, a, a minor adj, or you know, minor um, landscaping to finalize the parking area, uh, which I think that's been part of the conversation. So it, it may not cost much at all if it's done in conjunction with the forestry activities.
Okay, go ahead, um, select person air.
I, Daniel, I have been a sound body in mind, making the motion for the hard work of the conservation and the private owners and the Town Lands Committee that worked hard on this, that everything will work out. So moved.
Um, so are you making a motion to approve the acquisition of the Panish Hall Conservation Easement and authorize the expenditure of $1,176.50 and 50 cents from the Conservation as appropriated by the Conservation Commission?
Yes, and all the questions that came up, being about a sound body of mine, we already addressed this.
So you've made, yep, you've made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air, I.
You're muted, George.
You're, you're muted, sir.
Sorry for that, Madam Chair. Abstain.
Knapp, I.
Skosh, I.
And Hardikoff, I.
Thank you.
I understand, I understand how the abstain vote works.
Moving on to the Barrington Police Collective Bargaining Agreement, are we voting on this tonight or just reviewing it?
Voting.
Okay, um, questions, comments, concerns, all?
If you'd like, I'm happy to give a quick, a quick summary, although all the details are attached to my report.
Move the motion.
I'd second the motion.
Um, I have one adjustment, um, just because this will end up being a warrant article. So um, I had originally written that the select board is asked to consider approving the tentative agreement for inclusion in the 2021 warrant. Um, the uh, labor attorney would like to see the motion be the select board is asked to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement and recommend approval of the cost items by town voters at the annual meeting.
Wait, have we ever done that before?
Well, you haven't because it's only every three years.
Oh.
I don't remember doing that the last time.
I neither, yeah, I don't remember ever, I don't ever remember reading that.
All it means is that the select board is placing the warrant for the collective bargaining agreement uh, for town voters to ratify. So you'll see, if you go back to the, to the warrant printout, you'll see the two placeholders for the collective bargaining agreement. Um, so it'll be the, the collective bargaining agreement will be summarized with the cost items and then there'll be a renegotiation article. Um, and so what the select board is doing is, is um, approving the collective bargaining agreement and taking the cost items to voters to be approved. If voters don't approve the cost items, the collective bargaining agreement isn't ratified and would have to go back to renegotiation.
How is it that we are allowed to enter into the three-year contract that has an impact to the budget two and three years out?
That's what voters have to decide.
Oh.
You can do up to three years, but you can't, uh, or you do, what is it, year to year, but then uh, anything that's, you can do up to a five-year agreement, correct, Connor?
Kind of. The way, the reason this one's different, Andy, is because the cost, you're not agreeing to the cost right now. So there's an impact to the 2021 budget, the 2022 budget and the 2023 budget. And so it'll be broken out, um, it'll be broken out on the warrant article showing the impact to the three. You're probably more familiar seeing, cause you see it more often on the school collective bargaining agreement articles. Um, you know, the town's, um, that, you know, it's only once every three years. Um, and so uh, that's, that's how it has to be structured legally.
Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I'll draw everybody's attention to the last page of his handout under uh, Article uh, 25, duration. If you read that, it says this agreement is in effect from a period of April 1st, uh, 2021 to March 31, uh, uh, 2024. It, it has that already there for part of the agreement to go that way on those dates. So it corresponds with a three-year rule.
Um, I, I have a question, Connor, in reference to this. We had, during the time that we did the compensation structure, we had discussed um, benefits and which portions of benefits were very lucrative. Um, I see a number of schedule changes in reference to the um, earning of time off. Is this more or less than what currently exists for these positions?
Yeah, it's a great question. So um, earlier this year, when the select board approved the uh, compensation study and made uh, wage and benefit changes for the town, uh, the town, the select board offered those changes to the police union. Um, as a sidebar agreement, the police union agreed to those changes uh, with the stipulation that wages and benefits would not be part of the negotiation for the successor agreement, which they were not. And so the, the red line version that you see there is just integrating that sidebar agreement into the full collective bargaining agreement. So it's exactly what the select board approved earlier this year, um, just bringing it into the full agreement. So those were changes that were already made. Um, nothing different, nothing more, nothing less. Great question, though.
Okay, very good. Select person Bailey, you have your hand up. Did you wanna speak again?
No, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, and this follows the wage and compensation structure that was approved, um, the work that was done this past year, correct?
Yes, and so there's the only commitment um, to wage increases in this collective bargaining agreement would be the same from the prior agreement, which is that the, or the same for the last two years in the prior agreement, which is that the um, police union employees are entitled to the same uh, wage increase offered to the rest of the town.
So based on that, I would make a motion to approve the tentative agreement for inclusion in the 2021 warrant. Questions, comments, concerns, or a second on the motion, please?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Yeah, present.
Bailey, I.
Knapp, I.
Skosh, I.
Hardikoff, I. Thank you. Up next for our reading pleasure is the health insurance analysis. Connor, I'm gonna let you speak to this.
Absolutely. So this is just a four-year information. Um, I, I believe I'd mentioned it at a board meeting or two. This is kind of the bookend. Um, so very long process with the uh, school department and the town uh, going through and evaluating health insurance options. Uh, the costs and benefit of um, insuring together as one large group as it had, as has, was been, as was done in the past, excuse me. Uh, and so I wanna uh, express a tremendous amount of appreciation for the folks at the school uh, for being willing to go down this road, um, and evaluate um, the, the options and thoughtfully consider them. So at the conclusion, we agreed, you know, obviously administrators cannot, you know, make these decisions uh, for their respective organizations. Um, so we agreed to present this information in full to our respective boards for their consideration. Um, so the big picture, um, the, the, we received a joint proposal for the town and the school on the town's health insurance provider and the school's health insurance provider. Um, the school health insurance provider, um, there, there was not, I think there was the opportunity for about a 3% cost savings for the town, um, but the, the comparable plan identified was comparable plan identified was much less generous than the plan, the benchmark plan offered by the town. And so the inherent problem, you know, talking big picture about comparing health insurance offered by the town, offered by the school, is it becomes very difficult to compare health insurance plans offered by different providers. So school care uses Cigna, uh, the health trust uses Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. And so one of the things that I found tremendously helpful is what I've included in my write-up, which is the, um, examples. And this is from a summary of benefits, and it's standardized from every health insurance plan. Folks that deal in health insurance every day, um, are rolling their eyes because obviously they're there, you know, this is a great resource. But it was great for me, and I want to, um, draw the board's attention to this. So if you look at the, on page two of five, the school care yellow with choice fund, um, in those three examples, if you look all the way down to the bottom, the cost to the covered individual, $2,060, $2,050, and $1,350. For the town health insurance plans, um, or the health insurance plans offered by the town's provider, um, you'll see, we're looking at 1,140, 1,510, 1,504, and now on page three, 1,130, 1,336, 1,616, and then at the bottom, $70, $71, $185. So, big picture, that last, that last, um, health insurance plan, the AB 10, that costs just 2%, almost 3% less than the school health insurance plan with costs at 2,000, 2,013, 50. So I think that does a good job of articulating the reduction in benefit should the town use the school's health insurance provider at the same cost. So, um, it was pretty easy to conclude that there was not an opportunity for tremendous cost savings if the town were to join the school. Um, then looking at if the opportunities for cost savings if the school were to join the town. So the town offer, the town's health insurance provider, Health Trust, offers us a variety of plan structures, um, which we really appreciate. We offer three to employees, and it gives you the opportunity to, um, really pick and choose the plans that are best for your employees. And so, again, it becomes difficult to identify comparable plans. Um, but, uh, I, you know, working with Health Trust, um, uh, worked to identify two plans that were most comparable, we felt were most comparable to the current plan offering of the school. Um, and in one case, I believe, you know, likely more generous. Um, and so on page four, you see the cost breakdown of, of how the, those plans would impact the cost to the school. And so the first, um, table is their current premiums. Um, you'll see that 100% of the premiums cost approximately $2.3 million. Um, with the, the site of service, um, plan, that's the second table, um, that would, the total premiums for that would be about eight, 1.8 million, or a savings of 487,000. The AB 15, that third table, um, would be just over 1.9 million, or a savings of 365,000. And so that doesn't quite tell the whole story. Um, certainly those numbers, um, you know, caught my eye when first evaluating because it certainly seems like there would be an opportunity for big cost savings to the school. Um, in my narrative on page five, the one thing that that doesn't contemplate is, is the choice fund, which is offered by school care, which is basically an incentive program that provides either $1,000 or $2,000 towards the deductible if you meet certain wellness requirements. And so the benefit summary examples, um, don't really factor that in either. And so, uh, what I did to try to correct for that is say, okay, if the, if the school were to say that this Health Trust plan is comparable, and we would save X number of dollars, but then we would privately fund, we would individually fund that choice fund for our employees. So $1,000 for every covered individual and $2,000 for every two-person or family plan. And so the approximate cost of that for the school would be $192,000 a year. So even with that additional cost, that brings the potential savings to $173,000 or $295,000, depending on the plan option chosen. Um, so I, I think that there's a serious, um, consideration for the school to have, um, for savings there. Um, like I said, I know that they're going to bring it to their board. Um, you know, they have collective bargaining agreements, um, and it's not, you know, changing a health insurance plan isn't something that's easy or happens overnight. Um, but I think the results of the process certainly show that there could be opportunity for cost savings, um, you know, to evaluate the, uh, between the town and the school. Um, and so like I said, it's, it's a big consideration, and certainly it becomes very difficult to evaluate every, um, component of a health insurance plan or health insurance provider. Um, school care and Health Trust are both tremendous organizations that primarily serve governmental entities, schools and municipalities. And so they offer a similar, um, suite of, um, wellness programs and incentive programs and things like that. Um, so they both do a great job. Um, but when comparing, it seems like there might be an opportunity for savings, uh, if the school were to join the town.
Okay, so, um, we're not changing anything from a town perspective, other than allowing the school to decide whether they would like to join as participants in our health plan, correct?
Kind of, yeah. I think we're a long way before allowing them to join, but I, I think it's that they will be reviewing the information, um, with their leadership and possibly their union representatives.
Gotcha. And no action is required on our part?
Correct. Just for your information.
Okay. Moving on to our dun, da, dun, dun, da.
Dan has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, select person here.
Would this be a good time to approach about them about MOU?
Are you speaking of in reference to the, um, janitorial services?
And every, every things we do with the school, the, uh, we don't have a sound MOU yet with them.
That, that is correct.
Uh, I'm happy to, uh, send a note over that the select board is interested in finalizing the MOU. Um, as you remember, the last step, the last action taken, uh, was that the superintendent and I developed a draft memorandum of understanding, um, for ratification by both boards. The select board ratified, signed that document, and, uh, the school board has not yet acted on, uh, the ratified memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, deliberative session. So in a nutshell, we have multiple options of how to hold the town deliberative session. The town moderator and our town clerk recommend that we continue with a traditional in-person deliberative, pardon me, session, and that resources and space as well as PPE, uh, be considered in the safeguarding of people from, uh, spreading the COVID-19 virus. So you're being asked to consider an in-person deliberative session with designated area for residents without masks. Um, I did ask that we consider also allowing airflow through the gymnasium. So while it might be slightly chilly, it would certainly be in our best interests. And, um, and that we make sure that the select board members who typically sit at a table within two to three feet, maybe a foot and a half of each other, that we be six feet apart. Um, select person here, you had your hand up first. Questions, comments, concerns?
As a board, I'm willing to make a motion mandatory mask entered in the building, social distancing, and then a designated area for non-mask. But everyone enters the building, needs a mask. And we have the right to make the governor's mandate more stringent than less as a board. In a lot of towns, people in Dover, mandatory mask. We have the right to do this as a board, I believe. I make, I will make the motion.
Okay. The only other piece to that that we would need to include is there are certain individuals due to health conditions that cannot mask up. And so I think it's imperative that we do have that area where people who are not masked up are, um, quarantined over in whatever areas appropriate. Andy had his, um, hand up next. Go ahead, Vice Chair Nap.
Would we also be doing an online version similarly to these meetings so that if people did want, uh, really?
No.
And Andy, it's a great question. And the reason is, is be, for the same reason that we wouldn't be able to allow people to vote, people are only able to speak at deliberative session if they're a registered voter or if the moderator makes an exception. And so it becomes impossible to properly vet folks virtually with the supervisors of the checklist, um, to be able to speak question or otherwise. Um, I do plan to live stream the event, um, so that it's available for folks as a, um, to passively participate. Um, but the, the only planned active participation would be for folks that show up in person.
Any other questions, Vice Chair Nap?
No, it's, uh, my, you know, it's the idea of, ah, I got nothing.
We're all worried about a super spreader event. I understand. Go ahead, uh, select person Bailey.
When you talk about, uh, uh, as Dan brought up about the masks, why can't they wear those, uh, full face shield type things? Can we, can we do that? Connor, instead of having to wo- wear the mask, turn around, just have the full face shield to take care of that?
Yeah. So it's a great question, George. And the, the, what the problem becomes is the same issue we ran into with voting. So in or, so whether it's ballot voting or deliberative session, unless we provide an opportunity for anybody to participate, we can't require, we can't refuse somebody from participating for not wearing a mask or a face shield. Um, for deliberative session, it's a little bit easier because if somebody doesn't wear a mask, then we can have a separate area in the room for them to be segregated and, and have an opportunity to participate, the same as everybody else, but in a different area. Um, the, the problem is if w- we cannot refuse somebody from the opportunity to participate in deliberative session for not wearing a mask because we don't have another opportunity for them to participate. And I, uh, back to Andy's point about virtual participation, thinking about deliberative session, I was so excited at the idea of giving folks the opportunity to participate virtually in the session. And, um, you know, the, the lawyers and powers that be, um, are the ones that, that get to decide the framework for these meetings. And so if you haven't read, Andy, on the, um, in the materials that I provided on page three, um, which is the italic section, it talks about temporary optional town meeting procedures, state of emergency. So that outlines per House Bill 1129, how the legislature is, is, uh, feels that you could satisfactorily allow remote participation for a virtual deliberative session. And it means no introducing changes. It's one virtual information session. You solicit questions, comments, and concerns in writing over email, et cetera. Then you have a second informational session. You share that information and you move on. There's no opportunity for making changes or anything. And the reason is, as I was explained, is that they, they didn't identify a suitable way to, um, confirm registered voters in a virtual capacity. Um, and so it's too bad. Um, like I said, I was excited about it, thinking about it. And I even, um, in talking, um, it through, said, well, yeah, we can have them participate, but you just don't, um, they just can't make motions or vote, you know, but they could ask questions and get information. And, um, the answer was unless the moderator is going to individually excuse every person that talks, you can't do that because state law requires, um, only registers voters speak. So.
So, um.
Vice Chair Nap, go ahead.
So my, my general thought on this, I'm trying to think about how do you do it and do it effectively? Cause this always takes several hours to get through. And I think even if we go quickly, there's a couple hours of time. And when you talk about, um, a lot of people sitting in a space or even 100 people, you're, um, and you understand HVAC systems and circulation systems, you're only making up 30% of the air with the unit fully open. Um, so if I look at how businesses have been set up, where you have people coming in, there are screening questions that have to be answered to come in and occupy the space. You have to take your temperature before occupying the space. Um, and everybody's wearing a mask. I honestly believe those are reasonable, um, requests. And as much as, uh, some people may or may not believe in wearing a mask, this is about protecting those that would be vulnerable around others.
And I think we're, I think the select board could absolutely, if that's what the select board wanted to do, is request folks to, um, fill out a sc- a screening questionnaire and take their temperatures. I think that there's no restriction on making that request. I think the issue would become if it was a requirement. And if it was a requirement, then we would need to have an opportunity for, to allow somebody to meaningfully participate if they chose not to do that. Uh, and, and that's what we don't have in, except a separate area.
And that would, but it aligns with the governor's orders.
So the governor's mask.
I know, none of them are mandated, no requirement.
Well, the governor's mask mandate allows for an exception for folks, um, who can't wear a mask, and also allows for an exception for folks that can maintain social distancing. And so the idea of the separate area would be that it's socially distanced, um, and, and you're not allowed to ask somebody, um, for a reason why they cannot wear a mask.
I know, I've reviewed all of these. The question is going to be plex, like, can you plexi it off?
From the folks who are wearing masks or from other folks who aren't wearing masks?
From the folks that are wearing masks.
Yes. At, no, that could absolutely be physically separated as well as, um, distantly, distantly separated.
Yep.
Geographically separated. There we go.
So you're being asked to consider continuing with our in-person deliberative sessions with designated area for residents without masks.
Yes, I'm also asking to consider the, the temperature screening because temperature is, albeit not a weeding sign, but it is a, um, quick indicator sign.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that the select board consider continuing with an in-person deliberative session with designated area for those without masks, with temperature check at the entrance, and with forms or at least a sign-in sheet for contract tracing from the event.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Well, no. Did you add social distancing to your motion?
I, I, I can certainly add social distancing with, I will amend my original motion to add with, um, required social distancing. We'll place everyone six to 10 feet apart. Could I have a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a second from select person here. Roll call vote beginning with select person here, please.
Air I.
Bailey, I.
NAP I.
Scotia, I.
Hardikoff, I. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you. Can I clarify two things real quick? Um, first, can I clarify?
I have two people who want to speak. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
All I'm gonna ask is, the person that sets up the room, please set it up with two microphones, one for those that wear a mask and for those that don't, please.
That's, that's also, I think, an important thing to note. Thank you, um, select person Bailey. Go ahead, Connor. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no bother. So, um, first thing, just clarifying that the temperature check and questionnaire is requested, not required. That's your intention. And the second thing is that the, for the contact tracing, uh, the supervisors of the checklist will have a record of all who attend, um, and check in. It is that satisfactory to meet the intent of your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Is everyone required to check in?
Except us.
Um, so you. Is everyone required to check in? I guess the problem becomes you, you have to check in to vote. You have to, um, be a registered voter and register to speak. I mean, I guess somebody could bring their kid or somebody could come with them.
That does happen where people bring significant others who might not reside in the same household in the same town.
So if somebody isn't registering, you'd like them, you'd like their information to be collected.
For contact tracing, yes.
Right.
Great.
Agreed. Um, go ahead, select person here.
I believe there's only has to be one person identified in each party. So they can contact that one person. If something happens that day, a couple will come down with it, we notify that one person in that party. That's how they do in restaurants. They don't take anyone's name down. There's one person in that party.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
In front of us are two things, and I'd like to ask for the leeway to move something around. Um, around. Are you all comfortable now? Hang on. Approving the 2021 budget and warrant article finalization, now that we have voted on the various portions of the budget.
We haven't talked about prosecution yet.
Okay, so you want to finish that off and then go to the budget? Okay. So before you was a change or an adjustment in prosecution services, adding approximately $2,400 or $700?
From, from the original 15,000, it's 2,400. From what we're paying now, it's closer to 5,000.
Okay, in order to allow for a change in the individual providing that service, or, or company providing that service, and also to allow for insurance coverage, correct?
Yes, so the police chief is requesting transitioning from prosecutorial services provided by the Stratford County Sheriff's Office to a contract prosecutor. The contract prosecutor will cost more than we pay to Stratford County Sheriff's Office. The contract that the Select Board has a draft of, is a draft that was reviewed by Primex, our insurance carrier, and Town Council. The prosecutor cites prosecutorial immunity in state statute, which is tried and true, and has been tested in court. And you have a court case in front of you as well. Despite that, our local council and Primex recommended that the prosecutor carry insurance, basically explaining that it only costs $260 to sue somebody, whether you can sue them or not. And if, you know, if she doesn't carry coverage, then the town will have to be defending that on its own. And so at their recommendation of including insurance, we asked if the additional requirement to add insurance would change the contract price to the contract prosecutor. And she said it would. 15,000 is without the insurance, as she believes prosecutorial immunity covers her, and 17,400 would be with the insurance recommended by Primex and local council.
And how many times in the state of New Hampshire has someone sued a prosecutor?
I do not know.
So we could be insuring ourselves over something that, okay, go ahead, Select Person Air.
I think the, the point that you're making is, is well taken, and I think that that's the point that the prosecutor is trying to make in, in saying that there's no need to carry insurance, because it's so well established that prosecutorial immunity exists.
Right. I mean, I can buy insurance for a hangnail, Connor, and it doesn't make sense to do so. So I think sometimes your risk analysis has to, has to be taken into account. Go ahead, Select Person Air.
Well, currently we're paying 11.5 for prosecution. And now if you go to 17.4, that's a 50% increase in the budget to make. And I can see put more burden on the taxpayers in this COVID-19. And we're only talking about misdemeanors. Any felony is going to Stratford County Superior Court. So I don't see the benefit and savings to the taxpayers. And then two, if this went out the bid, I know personally, know three prosecutors from Dover are retired. I don't know what they're up to, but they're retired. They're in stuff out there.
Vice Chair Knapp, did you put your hand up and then take it down?
I did. I was just saying, I agree with the idea of not, of not providing insurance, which brings the price down to, what, 15,000 and change, which is still a 40-plus percent increase in prosecution.
Yeah, I, I tend to lean towards Andy's perspective as well. Did you want to make a motion, Andy? I mean, I guess we don't need a motion unless you're gonna provide an adjustment. So I'll ask this. Is there a motion to increase the contracted services for prosecution services and add insurance? And I'll ask one more time, is there a motion to adjust the prosecution services contract and add insurance?
I'll make the motion for discussion only.
Okay. And do I have a second? I'll ask again, do I have a second? Seeing as no, we will not be adding to the contract. Okay.
What I would be looking for, or what, what we would be looking for from the board is a motion and a vote to do two things. One, to engage the services of Gene Reed as a contract prosecutor at a contract price of $15,000. And two, to waive the purchasing policy requirement of sealed bid for services in excess of $10,000.
What would the justification for waiving that be?
For waiving the purchasing policy?
Yeah.
So I think the justification, well, the justification would be that's not the process that was undertaken. In this specific situation, this is a prosecutor who is familiar to the police department and was acquiring clients in proximity to Barrington, who were transitioning away from the sheriff's office for a contract prosecution. And so it was an opportunity that was presented to the chief that he felt would add value to the town and the police department, and what was interested in the board considering.
Okay, so motion is to waive your purchasing policy and enter into a $15,000 a year annual contract with the prosecutor. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I would second that motion. Questions, comments, concerns?
A general comment on it, and I know this is something I had expressed to Connor earlier, but have not had the opportunity to talk to Chief Joy on, is just that when I look at typical prosecution services, I know some of the concern is around preparation of our officers, if they should need to testify. And I agree that if they do have to testify, they should be prepared. But I also agree if the, the state or the county in this case is deeming that it's not worth pursuing in a plea deal is there, is the most effective way of getting out of this, or least expensive way of getting out of it. I also, to some degree, kind of trust the, the decision on that. I also think that those of us that have, have the ability to fight, and those that don't have the ability often are stuck, usually kind of getting the, the pointy end of the stick, so to speak, whether rightfully or wrongfully. And that's my comment on it.
Okay.
Remember, we have a lot of misdemeanors. It's not like we have, have a bunch of felonies that happen all the time.
Go, go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I just want to bring to everybody's attention the non-public discussion that we had with the police chief over this, I believe it was a couple, three months ago. It may, might even have been longer, that we discussed the reasons why he recommended that we take this road. So that's all I have to say without going ahead and disclosing anything.
Okay, so you have before you a motion to waive the purchasing policy and enter into a $15,000 a year contract with Prosecutor Gene Reed. Do I have a second? I think that was your motion, right, Select Person Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a second on that?
I thought you'd seconded it already, Tracy.
Oh, I did?
Yes, you did.
Hey, we're, we're almost at the bewitching hour for me. So roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Air.
Air present.
Bailey aye.
Knapp present.
Sakosh aye.
Hardikoff aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, on to your next and last important motion. Will the Board of Select Persons, or the Select Board, approve the budget and warrant article finalization?
Tracy, can I make one clarification? Sorry, hate to do this. So the Select Board voted to approve the warrant article for the UTV. I didn't correct it at the time, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The number that I included in the draft warrant article was 32,000, with up to 16 coming from the Barrington Firefighters Association. The fire chief had referenced the 3,000, or $30,500 number. Was it the Board's intention in approving that, that it was 32,000 or 30,500?
It was 32,000.
Okay.
Whoa, 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 why would it be higher?
It was just up to 32,000. That's the way it was written. You'd have to re-vote all over again over $1,500, Andy.
It's right. The chief's number, though, was 30,500.
I agree with you, but the up to 16,032 is how the warrant article was written and approved.
That's, that's what I was understanding, Tracy. But if the Board's intention was to reduce it to 30,500, I wanted to at least make sure that we discussed it.
I, I honestly, I, at this late hour, if it comes in at 30,500, great. Putting a $1,500 constraint on it and holding another vote was not my intention.
Well, I've been butthurt Billy about it all night, so I mean, I might as well keep up my trend. 30,500 is what the fire chief asked for, so my suggestion is let's vote on it at that amount.
What if the cost of metal goes up? What if the cost of one piece of the equipment increases? What if shipping goes up?
Have you looked at COVID?
Why? It's 1,500 bucks, for God's sakes.
It's actually 750 if the Fire Chief Association's gonna cover 50% of it.
Yes, if you'd like to make a motion to change what was already agreed upon, thank you, Connor, for bringing this up. Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to change the warrant article amount for the UTV to the amount provided by the fire chief at 30,500.
Do I have a second? I'll ask again, do I have a second? Seeing as I do not have a second, we will not be voting on this. Now, can we move to the budget?
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, um, we have before us the 2021 budget and warrant article finalization. Would the Board like to make a motion to finalize the 2021 budget and warrant articles?
So moved.
And do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Questions, comments, concerns? You people like hanging out together too much. Go ahead.
What are you talking about?
You draw off these meetings. You have a motion and you have a second. Do you have questions, comments, or concerns about the 2021 budget and warrant articles? Other than Andy would like to spend nothing, please. Okay, roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air.
Air present.
Bailey aye.
Knapp aye.
Sakosh aye.
Hardikoff aye. Thank you all. Okay, I think we need, and Andy, don't let me forget you, because I always do. Select Persons reports, starting with Select Person Air. Report out, please.
All right, tomorrow at 1 o'clock at 38 Providence Road, there's gonna be a walk on a latent property. And Board members are encouraged to go. And so, and this will be a transaction with no money involved from the town, because conservation has no money. But they, they're gonna come to us to sign on as a partner in the conservation of Southeast Land Trust. And we will be responsible for the bond of the Barrington lands. So.
Thank you. Any other report out, School Board, Dan?
No, I haven't made it yet. And we talked about the town lands. That one good, and we had some problems with Zoom on town lands Saturday morning. They are addressing the issues. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
And they did the right thing for any other boy or committee out there. They were experiencing tough, technical difficulties in an RSA 91A meeting, and they canceled the meeting.
Okay, adjourned and rescheduled, right?
Correct.
Select Person Bailey, report out, please.
I have a meeting tomorrow night. Nothing else to report.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
There's no planning board meeting till tomorrow, so I don't have, we had a technology committee meeting last week.
Very good. And Select Person Sakosh.
You keep making these on Mondays, I can't make two meetings, so.
I understand. And I will tell you that based on my professional life, that I missed the last ABC meeting, but they did a great job with their report. And I'm always very grateful for the in-depth analysis that they put before the budget and asking a series of very important questions each time. So we are on to public comments at this time. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes, three minutes per person. If you'd like to speak, you may dial 664-0146. You may email administration@barrington新hamshire.gov. You may mouse over this screen if you happen to be on Microsoft Teams platform, and you can click on the little hand, the upper right-hand side. And if you are participating by phone, you may press star six and alert us to your choice of participating in public comment. I will give this 30 seconds on my timer. Okay, folks, seeing as no one would like to speak at this time, I think, did we need a non-public?
I have one quick thing in non-public.
When we say quick things in non-public, it turns into an hour and a half. But okay, for what purpose, sir?
Personnel.
Personnel. So motion to enter a non-public at 8:58 PM for purposes of personnel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
One second, Dan. Dan, you mentioned earlier that you had something you needed to discuss in non-public. Is it for a topic other than personnel?
Reputation, land, or personnel?
Or legal.
Legal.
Or legal.
No, I'm awesome.
Okay, very good.
Great.
Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Okay. And Hardikoff aye. I'll meet you all over in non-public. When we come out of non-public, we'll be reporting out, folks. Thank you. we'll be reporting out, folks. Thank you.
That was a tie.
No, Bailey beat me.
Andy, you look like you went through a washing machine in non-public.
I'm I'm like, Connor, I'm just, I'm so cached. It's Monday and I'm cached.
Tracy's pretending she's muted.
That was a great card. Enjoyed the pictures.
Can top my day. It's been the single most horrific one in three years in my role. But but it will get better because I'm an eternal optimist. Okay, where are we at? Do we have a report out for the public?
The board discussed one personnel matter and took no action.
Very good.
And I do not think there's any reason to need to seal non-public minutes. We could just move to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
And a second and a roll call vote, please.
Here, aye.
Sakoshai.
And Hardikoff, aye. I think I heard all five in the affirmative. 9:09 PM. You're wonderful. Great work, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Everybody.